Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Willington Board of Education Special Meeting Budget Workshop Number One. It is January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We are calling the meeting order at five thirty-two P M. We will start with our budget allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'd like to invite anyone who would like to be present to speak. And again. Okay, well, moving forward. Okay, um, we are wonderfully going to start with the introduction to the proposed spending plan for the school year of two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six prepared by Mr. Sina. So we'll begin with that.
Okay. Um, first off, this is hot off the press. This is, it's been a lot of work getting to where we are today. Thanks to my admin team staff. Donna. Brenda, this is a real team effort going back and forth, just collecting numbers, getting information to put into this. I'm going to tell you before when people see this today, because it's high, I alluded to this being high the last night, that don't panic because it's going to change. And I'll go through why it's going to change. Um, I can't tell you how, uh, but it's going to improve and I'll, I'll share that once I get to it. First thing I want to do is just kind of walk through the document. This document will be posted on the website tomorrow. It's going to be on share screen tonight when I go through it, but it'll be on the website tomorrow as my proposed budget. Right? First thing I want to walk do in the walkthrough, um, page two has your table of contents. So when you look at your table of contents here, we have a simple letter to the community. You've got the workshop dates in there. Um, you're the list of D O E members and admin team, district frameworks, which are getting second, the snapshot, which is kind of a big, high level overview, the budget process. Um, we have enrollment. And then we have the historical enrollment, okay? The ten programs, all of our funding fall into one of the ten programs. All right. And then the same appendix that we said, and these, um, you have instructional summaries for center hall and special education. We have a grant section. We have the full staffing list. I left the capital improvement thing in there. I'll show you what that looks like. And then we have the fiber look back. So that's all of the items of what's in here. It doesn't mean we can't add to it if you want more data in there, Tracy. Then you could, we could add those things in. That's what I have in here at this point. Okay? So, uh, I'm going to start and I'm going to jump a little bit here as I do this. When we develop a budget, we start, everything that we do has to align the goals in your district training. Right? So when we put dollars to something, it has to match something in here. And typically it's going to fall into student growth and success, culture and climate, or strategic investments. Okay? So there are no items in the budget that don't fall into those things. There's no like, you know, fancy trip someplace that has to do with kids. All right. So they align to this. Next, I'm going to jump to page twenty-five. These are all the instructional summaries. I'm not going to go through them right now, but the administrators took a bunch of time to go through these. And the instructional summaries basically are kind of a snapshot of their school or their program. Okay? Some points of pride, which could be specific to language arts or math or special education, professional development, some of the things that they're working on. Um, and then they've got their goals in there. And these are tied to current and future. All right. So I might talk about some of the things we're currently doing and into the future. And you can see that it's there for center, it's there for hall, and then it goes into special education. Okay? You've seen those before. What you have not seen before is they also tweak these a little bit. What you have not seen is there is a new example on, um, and people always ask for definitions of special education. Marsha has definitions in there for you. What is brand new that's added this year is the excess cost sample. I think this is important for you to look at. I think we put it in the document because we are going to be talking about this. Uh, you heard me talk about it with the, the regional board last night in meeting. Is a broken system. Um, and I'll get more into that when we get to the special education program. But I thought that it was really important for people to see how expensive this can be. And excess costs. And simply put, you've got a two hundred and ten thousand dollar student and it costs us a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So, yes.
Nice, good question.
Yeah.
Excuse me, where it says, um, the state reimbursement of seventy percent, is that the actual that we've been receiving or is that because it's supposed to be like ninety, right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We've been getting seventy, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's supposed to be a hundred.
Okay.
But it's not. Um, and I will share more about this.
I wasn't sure, yeah, the numbers, because I wanted to mention that last night, but I'm like, ah, I don't want to say.
Yeah, no, you're right. It should be higher. Um, and the thing I mentioned, I think I mentioned this last night is the, this is based on the year per pupil. Well, when you're small and you have six out placements, your per pupil is higher. Well, guess what? Now we have to get to a higher per pupil cost times four and a half times to find our excess cost number. That's not right. If you go, uh, five miles towards, um, a town where one of our administrators live, where their per pupil is in the eighteen thousand range, they spend thirty thousand dollars less before they get to excess costs. It's an open system. But it is the way it is. So when we talk about advocacy and we talk about why we're talking to legislators, this is the reason why. Okay? I don't want to get too much further into that, but, um, the programs are there. All right, uh, the snapshots here. The next page is the, the grants, um, and offsets that are in here with just some explanation. Um, we apply for these each year and, um, we apply, we're very transparent with our grants. I will tell you, there's certain districts that won't put this out there for the public to see. We apply almost every single dollar that we have. The REAP grant is probably the only one we don't. Um, and it's not a lot of money. So when you look at I D A B grants and you total that up, you're going to see in the program that exact dollar amount taken off the total cost at the bottom. When you start looking at special education, there's like over, by over five hundred thousand dollars in grants applied. At or non-lapsing, it's over six hundred thousand dollars to take our special education costs down. So all of these grants here get applied in the program and you'll see these titles as offsets in the bottom. Do you want to know what they are? What is title four? You can see what it, you know, how it's applied and what, what each one. Basically, title one, we use for reading intervention, math intervention. Title two is applied for professional development. Title four is for clubs. And the REAP grant is for technology. That's kind of how we apply our grants. So six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars comes off your budget with these grants. Without it, that's a, a much, much larger budget. Okay? Appendix E is the staffing. And I started this a few years back and, and one of the things that, uh, I want to point out is the way these, the district is built and the programs are built is you want to know what it costs to run a school. And when you run a school district, you really have to think about, okay, we need bus drivers. We have an after-school program now. Those people are in here. The cafeteria, those folks are in here. When you see some of these numbers where it says program nine like this, that is one person that's whole. That's actually Brenda. Some of her money is in program nine for her salary and some of it is program four, transportation. And the reason why is because a portion of her job is for transportation. The rest of her job is through my office. Okay? So when this is broken up, even though it says point one five and point eight five, it's a whole person. As opposed to if you look at the physical therapist and occupational therapist, they don't have anything else broken out like Brenda does there. So that's a district person and they are truly point two seven and point three eight. Okay? Like the subcaller works a little time each morning. That's it. So when you look at, we have a district, what we had put is into district staff, center school, a couple of people in there that are in different programs, classroom teachers, the unified arts teachers are in there, a social worker who has a piece in each building. You've got your special education teachers in here. Total staffing numbers are there. Staff support specialist. It goes all the way through. The coaches, math coach, literacy coach, half-time in each building. Okay? So you can see that's your main core. When you get to the other, you start getting into the food services. We put the business office in here because you need a business office to operate a school district. Ours is shared, but you couldn't do this without them. So we put in there four people. You've got the business manager, account, sales analyst, payroll, benefits coordinator, and assistant business manager. Okay? All of those are in the town budget though. But you couldn't operate the school district without them, if that makes sense. That's why they're in our numbers. We put one person in for I T. Even though that I T group, NOVIS, is much larger, we have one person basically here each day. We put them in. That's like a, a one times a hundred. It's kind of how I would look at it. You've got bus drivers for, you know, transportation, coordinator, things like that. Um, and then the after-school program is the end. So when you see point three H M S counselors, it's just a bunch of people who work ten hours a week, something like that total. So your district total comes to one thirteen, one sixty-five. Makes sense? Okay. Appendix F. I left this up there because we did not, in here, because I want to have something in here, but we did not update this this year um, because of the work that was done by Q A and M. That's basically our C I P approach right now until we figure out where we're going. That will be the presentation for C I P on twenty-second, but I left that, this in here just as a reference for people to go, hey, what projects are we talking about for Board of Education? Well, here's at least some sort of reference. I didn't want to put the whole Q A and M report in here. But I did have the list in here of items for both schools. It's from last year, but I left it in here because I thought it was important. Okay? The last page, and I think we started this last year, is the five-year look back. What does the budget look like each year? What was approved? What was the increase? Um, what was the percentage? How much money was turned back at the end of the year, meaning at the end of the budget, what was remaining? And then how much did the board transfer to non-lapsing? And then what went back to the general fund to the town? Last year was the first year you did not return a dollar because we had very little left and we put it all towards non-lapsing funds. Okay? So nothing went back. The reasoning for each one is, is at the bottom. Okay? Makes sense? Questions about that? Again, I think it's important information for people to know. We are pretty tight with our budgets and we don't have a, a standard. You know, we're just going to come in with a ten percent each year. We just haven't done that. Um, this is needs-based. Okay? All right. Enrollment, which is page nine. This is projected and actual. Okay? So when you look at the left columns, the actual twenty-four, uh, twenty-five, our October one enrollment, which we have to report every year, is in that second column with the grade. Totals on the bottom, the total on the bottom, but three seventy-eight includes the six out placements that we have. Okay? The number of home rooms is in the, the two thousand twenty-four column. And typically what happens is they just move down. So when you go to, when you look at, um, first grade having three home rooms currently and you have kindergarten with two, we don't keep three home, home rooms in first grade next year. We're going to go to two. So if you just look across, you can see right here, the number of first grade home rooms goes to two, even though this year is three. We base that on the number of kids. So some staff member has to move to make that accommodation. They've got, you know, learn a new curriculum. But we do that for cost savings, um, and, you know, just because the way this, the schedule runs. You've got the total, uh, the class size that's in there. Um, and that's current. As a one-ten, I updated that. And then one fifteen, the Willington enrollment, two oh five, one sixty-four, three seventy-five, and again, that three seventy-five includes the out placements. Now that out of the proud align was, people always like to, to know what the projected was, what was predicted. Those are his predictions. So we're underperforming with our numbers right now compared to where we typically were in the past. All right? Can one of you do me a favor and just make sure that outside door is not locked in red? We have a new F O P system. I just want to make sure, if you can push it straight open without hitting the crash bar, it's open. Thank you. Just in case someone was outside. The budget in twenty-five, twenty-six is the number of home rooms we expect. We expect the same number of home rooms as we're, or, or next year as we have this year. And then the projected class size in each, and you can see there's a bit of a drop within enrollment.
Do you think so? That was because of change in the start date? Oh, so the next year's class be bigger?
Not necessarily. Um, the kindergarten numbers are always a bit of, uh, a, a gas of surprise. And so we left it, it, that twenty-four number not knowing. We think it's going to be around that based, based upon what we know, who's currently in three K and how old they are. And trying to get numbers from Kids Kingdom, but sometimes people come out of the woodwork. It's a number. What? I will say, and I think y'all know this, is that the real estate market has been really wacky. And the number of people moving in and out has impacted this number. And so we've probably had more kids move out than move in. And some of the kids we've had who have, um, not mobile, but the, the, it's, I don't want to say transient, but a little more transient. They might come in for a year and then go someplace else. Um, so we've seen some of that in, in the rental, uh, area in town.
Wait, can I just interject? We had two brand-new kindergarten registrations last week. So, kind of surprising.
Yeah. And it's just, just sometimes you just don't know. It's not like we have a ton of rentals, but it does impact our numbers. Um, but we've dropped some. Um, if you look at the next page, that ten, that twenty-year enrollment, um, I had really said there was a period of time, probably right in this range, where we were relatively consistent. You know, that four, four forty-ish number, um, I would say since COVID, we're, we're, we've dropped again. We've seen another drop. Um, and this is typical. Uh, we are seeing, uh, across the state, other people, there's very few, um, towns. Uh, Keibert is one of them. Their numbers are, are, have just jumped big time, but a lot of towns have dropped. So I don't know if everyone's moved behavior in the wild, but, um, you can get a sense of, of the enrollments, uh, and kind of where it's been and where we're going. Again, you know this argument, you know the conversation. We start talking about three hundred and seventy kids in two schools. It's a lot of school to run for that number of kids versus five hundred and ninety-four kids in all five oh six. Big difference. Um, okay, you're ready. You probably repeat that. So how, how could you not? Here's where we're going. Page seven. This is the budget snapshot. Okay? So last year's budget that was finally approved, and you remember things happen. My first presentation to you, soon after that, we had out placements move in and came back up. This could change again. Okay? As of today, this is my, or the approved budget to the superintendent's proposed budget of ten million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. It is a sixty, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. It is six point eight four percent. If things go the way I expect them to go, I do see this dropping. And the first bullet is the reason why. When we build these budgets, we have developmental budget assumptions, and this is a huge one. Our insurance company, um, let, the current year we're in gave us a five percent decrease. Uh, I'm not sure if Connecticut was bought out or they bought someone else. There's a merge. Um, we were given and we have outstanding usage, meaning very good usage. We're, we're, don't have high claims. They're making money on us. They typically want to see have at least eighty-five percent. So the way I can explain this is for eighty-five every dollar, they want to make sure they're not paying more than eighty-five cents out on a, on a claim. That makes sense. So that means they are making fifteen cents profit for each dollar. We're in the sixties. They came back to us and said, you have a not-to-exceed insurance increase of twenty-five percent. That's crazy. We went up to bid. So we just met with our broker. Um, we're up to bid. I fully expect, um, that Connecticut air is going to be no longer in Wellington. That will be changing insurance brokers. I don't know who and I don't know what yet. I'm hoping that within a couple of weeks and potentially by the end of your process, that, that number will come down. And the way it will come down is, is if they get a, a proposal in, our broker's got a proposal in. And it's, it's, she can say, okay, based upon this newest number, even if it's not the one you take, you know you're not going to have an increase higher than fourteen percent. We'll drop this. It'll change our program ten number. It'll drop your budget total. Okay? Because that's a big, big number.
So this number represents a twenty-five percent increase in insurance? Okay.
Correct. To your budget for the worst. Because that's how, what we always do. Last year we had it early. Um, what is interesting when you look at program ten, and I don't want to get too far into program ten, but because this is so important, is that if you were to compare the current year to what we budgeted for next year, it doesn't look like twenty-five percent increase, and it's not. It's because our, our current pool, we're budgeting based upon our firm pool, our group of people. People moved in, people moved out, people took insurance, people didn't. So our current pool is a smaller increase. It's like, it only shows up to you, I think, as around seven percent. But again, if it drops, it's going to improve your budget, which I fully expect it's going to drop. That was the very clear message we heard from our broker. She's like, people are going to want to bid on your plan because you have good usage. You're, don't have high, a ton of high flaming. You know, when you start talking about six, seven, eight people over a hundred thousand dollar claims, that's a lot. We don't have three. All right, so that's good information. It hurt your number right now. Okay? Heating fuel, we locked in a while ago because we got a good, that, it came in as a good number and we didn't want to take a chance of it going back up. So heating fuel decreased to two seventy-two compared to two ninety. Um, diesel decreased to two seventy-eight from two ninety-eight. Electric supply rates just went through the roof again. Um, and it hurt us. There's like a twenty thousand dollar increase on that alone in electric. Um, we have the six out placements that we know of today. Our contractual transportation increased by about eighteen thousand. So you can see some of those bigger things where, where we know you've got some increases. Okay? I'm not going to go through all the shared services. I think people know we share things in, in small town and in the region wherever we can. I don't have it on there. I probably should put it on here. Um, like Marsha tries to do ride share for whenever we have, uh, outplacement transportation where it's on the same route someone else is going in the region. That's shared services. This is with the town, but we do shared services wherever we can. So when you look at these things, the business office, even though it's not in our budget, it's shared. NOVIS is shared. We, um, collaborate to get a lock-in our rates for heating oil, electricity. Um, our landscaping is together. The phone and internet, actually, the internet's us. The phone is, is shared. Um, we do our negotiations for, with our broker for health insurance together, all those things. So we're doing those things together. Sometimes, for the most part, it helps us, saves us money. And then I think everyone's also heard about unfunded mandates. There's just more and more every year. Um, I will say Representative Nuccio loves to hear what we can do to eliminate these. If you, uh, know some of these, um, they just get in the way of, of, you know, what we're doing. They don't put any dollars into these things. So there's just some examples there, even though some of them might seem, um, minor, you have to spend time developing some of these things. Uh, I will tell you, remember our, uh, diversity equity plan that we submitted a long time ago? I literally just got an email today that it was approved. Uh, we spent time on that and we didn't do that for us per se. We did that because we were told we had to have that plan. Okay? So there's a lot of examples like that of things that we have to do. And, and you have to put dollars into it. All right? Questions about that page? All right, budget process. So when I do the, when I get all the numbers in, I basically apply every single grant and offset I can. Um, and you can see them, what program they're applied to here and how much money it goes to. Um, again, um, the, the title grants, you can see what they're for. It's intervention, REAP is technology. You've got clubs at whole school, seven thousand. Special education is over six hundred thousand dollars offset, um, with a big chunk of it being excess cost. Title four, uh, this is, uh, transportation for program four for clubs. Um, title two is, we just offset all of our P D with that title two grant, ten thousand, one oh nine. And then program nine, we offset a little bit of the technology for the district, um, portion at six thousand. So total reduction, seven sixteen, seven forty-one. Off to get to the ten point four million. We've already reduced a lot with all of those grants that were, were lucky that we're applying for and getting. Just to be clear, every title one dollar is spent. Every title two dollar is spent. Every title, when I say spent, it's an offset in the budget. I don't have extra. Okay? And I believe that's true for you as well, Marsha, and I D A, maybe some supply money, but it's, it's not a lot. We have a big offset here. Good? So as we build this, and as I, I'm going to jump into program one, um, just like we always do, we build this based upon need. Okay? So we've already removed the items that, if administrators know, if they sent me a wish list, I was like, haha, that's funny. Thank you very much for the thought. There's not money for that this year. Uh, and there were items, there were thoughts, um, that we had to put on pause. The things where we've already taken steps in, whether it was this year or, or in prior years, you know, using, having things like Rosetta Stone as our language program and paying for a paraprofessional to run that program, it's working. It's not perfect, but it's working. We have an assistant speech and language person that, instead of a second teacher. We have all sorts of cost-saving measures throughout the budget. Okay? So program one is center school. It's always the three columns. The adjusted is after, if we made any adjustments at the end of the year. Um, so sometimes you'll see a big bump, like if we did a, a maintenance project, that might have, we might have moved money there. So I'll, I'll, if you see something that jumps out at you and you're like, what in the world is that? We can explain those things. Approved is our current request is for next year. The staffing, um, has not changed. What you see in the point seven three and point three two is simply a change in grant amount. And it's less funds from the grants and more to, oh, I hate when I miss the zero. I just, I see things. You can look at this budget over and over and over and then just see stuff like that drives you crazy. The eighteen point seven three to point three two versus the prior year, it's just a change in grants. It's the same number of people. You still have two staff support specialists in this budget. Okay? The salaries are there. I will tell you, this is one of the increases in the budget, across the budget, throughout the budget. You had a contractual change in a new contract for W D A for teachers. You're going to have a contractual change on the, on the non-cer, the W E S union, S S union. There's increases because of that. Okay? So you can see those built into this. So you can already see in that salary section, there is, um, increase there. The purchase service are things that, um, we typically have con, contracts for. So you want to know what's contractual? That was part of our conversation. So when we say we have subscriptions for math, science, reading, library, media, things like that are like. things like that are like follet, which is our online program, how we track our books for the library. I don't know how you run a library without that. So that's a split cost between the two schools. That's an example of a purchase service. Info shred is an example of a purchase service. Instead of killing a shredder constantly, we have pickup. It's not a lot of money, but it's a it's it's a, you know, one of those contracts. Um, the copier lease went up this year. It's a brand new contract. Um, and so that we that hit several budgets, um, several programs. Our phone service, again, contract went up a little bit. Our internet up a little bit. That four thousand four fifty-eight is just for center school. What I'll tell you is that is after we have a special uh rate through, because we apply through E-rate. Um, without that, that would probably be times three for one bill. So E-rate gives us a lot of money. Um, you get the postage meter rental, you've got the trash service. Uh, we took out the extra activity, the club money, cuz it was not getting spent. And we have other areas that if we was something for clubs that we could use. So even through all of that, there is a a little bit of a decrease there um in the in the program. Lisa has a large decrease in educational supplies. We, this is intentional. It's not that we went and caught things. We have been, we have budgeted for um one-time purchases. And some of those one-time purchases have been made, and since they're they've been made, we're not doing, we don't need to do it again. Bridges math was an example of that. One that we have budgeted for um, that has not come through yet is the open side curriculum um units. That was supposed to come out in twenty-three, twenty-four, and it's supposed to come out in twenty-four, twenty-five. And we are still twiddling our thumbs waiting for open site to push out the elementary units. So we don't have the money there for that right now. I'm not worried about it because what we've seen is that I'm not so sure if they know when it's gonna come out. Um, so we've adjusted in 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 what we're doing there. So when I look at that number, please don't think, you know, they'll cut supplies by nine thousand dollars. That's, it was intentional, um, and and it wasn't that someone's not getting what they asked for on the supply side. Um, but again, you're thinking about unified art supplies, math kits, math workbooks. All of those things fall into that section. Okay? The textbooks are really, the library books are out of the media center. We don't have a reading textbook. It's we left that blank intentionally just to let people know that's even with a new program. Um, they have the workbooks. It's in the supply line, okay? And then periodicals are things like time for kids. Some of those come out of the library. Some of those are into classrooms. Um, but that's for the entire school, that seventeen hundred dollars, okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
Two questions, actually. I think I asked this last year too, but I can't remember. Um, copy releases, maintenance, how come we don't just buy our copiers? It's more than paying eighteen grand a year?
Yeah, and the copier lease maintenance actually has the cost of the paper within it too. So we not every copier, I think teachers will love this, not every copier's color. There's like uh, you only have one, you only have one is your copier color? Yeah, I think there's one in each building and then we have one shared top color copier here and the rest are black and white.
Okay.
And it was cheaper than having printers in every teacher's room.
Alright, um. And then our telephone and internet service, is that something that we could like shop around? Like obviously I just know from like a personal thing, like you could choose like Charter or Frontier or something. Is that something, is that like?
Internet, we have shopped it and it's a, that's a negotiated rate. It is the cheapest rate we would get for what we have. Um, we actually dumped Spectrum and it went to Sen, C E N. Is that what you have, John? Yeah, I think a lot of school districts have sent because it's, you get a lot for not as much money. And it's, I can't answer that about telephone. I don't know that there's too many options through here. Um, that's something that Peter and I I think are looking at, like phone replacement. I know that's we didn't do it that long ago, but it's already on the radar. That might impact the cost. It's just about the number of lines that we have to run the district. That's part of the issue. So the number of lines they need for, like, not everybody has a direct line. There's extensions, but we also don't pay for like repairs. There's no extra money. Costs a lot of money if our phones go down and we have to have service come in because we don't have a service contract. Um, cuz it's really expensive, so are the repairs.
And then one other question, I don't know if this is just me being a frugal granny, but I figure it's worth saying. For the copiers and stuff, so I can imagine like brand new tower printers and copiers and all, like the latest technologies expensive, but would we ever is it worthwhile to consider going to like an auction that like maybe Yukon would have or like something like that to buy something that's a little bit older? And then maintain it that way? Like, do you know what I'm trying to ask?
Yes, so we we typically here have, this is the first year, well, now we're back on new. Um, we were operating on, uh, I think it was five years. I'll give you the example. So my copier in my office, at the end of its lease, we purchased it and just paid for repair. Um, and we ran that, and that's typical in the buildings as well. Even they they use their copiers a lot more than I than we do, obviously. Um, if we, if it's in good shape and we can buy it and we can keep it running, we do that. And typically sometimes it's two, three, four years where we can do that. And then it cuts to a point where as some of it's um, security-based as well because they're all networked.
Okay.
We have, they have to be able to print from their machines and it's gotta be safe to be able to do that. So that's another reason, some of the newer machines.
Okay, that makes sense. I didn't think. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I, um, you know, do this a little snappy, so please stop me if I'm going too fast. Um, alright, equipment is uh five thousand dollars. That's Chromebooks and iPads at center. That is a full offset at the end through REAP, so you don't pay anything for it. Um, Sam, this is for you. Uh, the maintenance, I did put the additional ten thousand dollars at in this one. I think actually I put nine thousand nine hundred in this this contract or in this program. Um, I looked back at what we've been doing in both schools. I told you have had repair things that have cost a lot of money. It's only January. Um, and we probably would have spent every dollar of that ten thousand dollars at both schools already for emergency repairs. Um, I put the money in here. This might be something long-term again that you have to cut, but I'm putting it in here because I can see the value in it and I can show you the bills that it would have been, it would have been gone. Um, it's very tight to do those things. The other items that are in that line in the building maintenance line, you can read. So you have to have the firearm inspections and pest control. Um, and and core contract, we're actually looking um to see if that, if there's other companies that will do, have to give us a better price and better service. We're constant looking at those things. Um, so you can see, like, how do you do without you know, having your boiler tank inspections? You can't, you have to do it per the state. So all of those things fall into that line. Will you do me a favor and go upstairs and close that door for me, please?
Have a question real quick? For the M four contractors that go out, I mean, I know that we like having them because they have the staff that can support on call demands and they're familiar with the school and um the equipment that we have and everything like that. But what is is it like a one year with um ability to extend? Okay, are you, are we gonna put something out to bid or what's your?
So we're asking, we asked uh two other companies that we've worked with uh, that have the capacity to deal with the not the homeowner level stuff. It's commercial grade. Um, we have asked two other vendors to bid. We've received one of their bids. The other one came out and looked at the stuff. And it's gonna give us a bid, so it's preventative maintenance.
Right.
That's the contract. We, the other part of the contract is we get a negotiated trip rate. Does everyone charge us a hundred and fifty dollars just to come and see you now? Um, we have a a trip rate that's half that. So we were asking to see if there's other companies that could match it or do better um, and provide the or more services for better. Um, and what is their hourly rate? Um, we watch all those things and to be quite honest, my two maintenance guys are very good at this. If M core sends out a rookie and can't solve the problem. And then M core sends out the senior person who has all sorts of experience, fixes it, hits the snap of their fingers cuz they know our system. We fight those bills and we win because send us, there's, they have a few people that know our systems like inside and out. We actually wait for our preventative maintenance on some things to get a, there's one person in particular, both guys like. Um, and so that's intentional. We just wanna make sure whoever we get they have the expertise to run our systems and fix our systems. And then when they give us a quote to fix the system, that it's not three times what other people will do.
Do we do any PMs and helps?
Yeah, they do some some stuff, like they might do filters and things like that, but um in the summertime when they clean. But their, the main um PM stuff that they're doing is, you know, a lot of pneumatics stuff that we have. Um, the air conditioning units, things like that, all of the heaters, things like that.
Can you share the other two contractors or you don't want to?
I don't wanna say them.
Okay, that's fine. I was curious. I think I have an idea of what, that's okay. Alright, thanks.
Yep. Uh, the other there that's conference travels contractual, that's part of their their um contracts. Principal supply has been printing. There's not a lot of money in there. A lot of that goes into, you know, something special comes up and Lisa says, I don't have money in another line to do something. That's not a lot of money in the in the grand scheme of the budget and um it's not a lot of money for most districts, it's probably times five, to be honest with you. Um, and then they have their dues. So total expenditures, you can see what the offsets are. There's thirty-six thousand offsets and the um budget is one point eight million. It's a four percent increase, twenty-five, twenty-six.
How do you come up with that number? Actually, I have a different number.
Um, it's actually calculated off of the spreadsheet from Donna. You think it's higher or lower?
I think it's lower. Because when I did the budget total, I just did a simple division of the budget total, I get, I get three point seventeen.
That's probably one seven, uh, the difference from last year to this year, not budget total, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but that that like helps the increase, right?
We would fat, we would take the one million seven hundred forty-two thousand, take that away from one million eight ten and divide it in the difference into one nine seven forty-two thousand to figure out the average. The increase. Does that make sense?
It does. I just thought it's a simple way to do it.
Any other questions about program one or questions for Lisa?
It's the great continuing for the reading program, or is that a one-shot deal?
One shot deal. Yep, so yeah, you have a new reading program, but I think you need to look forward all those dollars for spend, so.
You have VoIP phones?
No.
Yeah, they're a lot. Now, if you could, we converted over to VoIP, would Novus take care of it? So there's no cost?
We would have to pay more money to Novus.
Oh, uh, yeah.
But yes, they could, they could. They actually are once recommending the changeover to to VoIP because wh- when we do our um security, sorry. In- internet phones, we'll call them. When when we did our annual review with Novus, one item that they had, they go through our security checklist, like where are you with cybersecurity? How protected are you? We ha- green is good, we're mostly green. There's a very few reds on there. That's one of them. They're like, your phones are um an issue.
Are they digital at least?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, John, just so you know, like prior to the current phones, which we've only had maybe five years now. We didn't have caller ID.
Okay.
So this step up to us was like, wow, it was very, it was like, wow, you can see what's calling. You know, um. Alright, program two. We good? Any other questions for Lisa or? Okay, I'll check it out.
Hi, I just, I feel that I'm bringing it up because it's less than four, so it sounds better.
Oh.
Did you get the same number twice or?
No, I was, I was wrong on the first one, but I went three point nine, so it's still.
I can tell you the dollar amount is right, but I will, I will check the percentage increase. When I say dollar amount, meaning the the total cost of the program.
Right.
Um, I do have a question, actually. Um, in the district, when you were talking about the district budget, the district's staffing, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, there was a position from the the health specialist. Where is that represented?
Um, I'd have to look. I don't recall. What program you mean?
Yeah, I mean, is that the the enhanced counseling kind of person?
Yeah, so like I can tell you that, um, wait, it doesn't say.
It's grant.
No, but it's still tied to something. Are you talking about the person we wrote the grant for or are you talking about our? So we have a school-based health center, which is not on here. We have a a school counselor at the middle school who's tied to the middle school program. We have um a social worker who's tied to both schools. And then we have the mental health support stat stat specialist who is grant-funded a hundred percent. But we'll have to have a portion, you're supposed to have it in your third year, next year, your third year. You don't need to because we have so much money in that account. I did need to put it in here.
I'm pretty sure I don't understand what you're saying, sorry.
Wait, she's there, she's not in this, in the budget. If you decide to keep her, the following year, she will be in the budget. We, in the third year of the grant, they are giving us less money. But the money from years one and two roll over.
Okay.
And what happened was because what we put in, what we thought we were gonna pay someone, she was a newer person, got paid less, which is how in the past we've paid for other people's health insurance. We've done offsets in that. So there's enough money still from years one and two to cover her entire salary with what they're also giving us in year three. She's not in the budget at all. You will, Jen, I I can almost a hundred percent guarantee it because of caseloads. See it in twenty-six, twenty-seven. At a hundred percent BOE cost.
So should it be in the budget just at a zero because it's a grant and then just so it's kind of? I don't know, I just.
Well, she, it's represented on staff, on the staffing side. It's just not rep, like I would just have nothing to put in there. There's no dollar. Straight, like it doesn't hit any budget, but any BOE budget money, it just, it gets paid.
So that's a different position than the school-based counselor.
Correct.
So where is the mental health specialist? Right, is that in both schools?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I I guess I'm not familiar, shame on me, with that.
Which part?
The existence of that person.
Uh, I mean, tell me I'm wrong, full caseload?
I'm not, I'm not doubting that this, there's plenty of work, believe it, cuz I understand that. But I just, I don't.
Are you talking about maybe having a placeholder for that person in the budget? So it is not lost?
I, I think so, yeah.
The placeholder would be zero, though.
Right, right, I understand that, yeah. But when, but if you're talking about twenty-five, twenty-six, this person appearing in the budget at full BOE cost, I feel like that's, it's worthy of a placeholder so that we can have an understanding of.
Then you could do one of the grant offsets at the end.
There is no grant offset, yeah.
Since the grant's paying for the person.
That's only through next year.
You just wanna line items for that particular job? Or cuz it it seems like some of the stuff is rolled into administrative, rolled into teachers. You wanna specific.
It would be rolled into teachers or whatever union you choose put into.
Is that what you're looking for?
I think so. I mean, it's separated out in the staffing.
That's intentional, though. So everyone is separated out in the staffing. The positions are all separated out intentionally. Because when we take, we actually in our spreadsheets, make sure every salary matches our staffing's spreadsheet. That you see at the end. It, when you see teachers, like, look at program two right there, teachers. It, when you see teachers, like, look at program two right there, teacher's twenty one point five four. That person would just fall into that mix. This, that, and the person we're talking about here couldn't fall into teachers because they're not teacher certified.
Right.
They would have to fall into something else. Um, and it probably, just like you see paraprofessional on this one. Those three people, paraprofessionals are the library, run the library, and intervention space, and the lighting space at Hall School. She would probably fall into that type of role. In that dollar amount, that has to actually be negotiated.
Where are the social workers and the?
Teachers.
They're, oh, they're considered.
They, well, they have to have teacher certification.
Certified teachers.
They're certified, yeah.
So is the mental health specialist? I guess I'm trying to get an understanding of the position too, so the mental health specialist is a. Is a paraposition but specializing in mental health or?
You can't really classify it that way, I'm just saying it can't fall into the teachers because she does not have teacher certification.
She's a master level social worker, she is not a certified school social worker, it's.
Okay.
It's silliness that, state, let's just call it what it is.
And it's the same, it's a school-based person.
Correct, yeah, she's not certified, she just is a. Mental health specialist, yeah.
Okay, so is the grant that's paying for her? Reflected some, in some line?
Nope.
Was not in here at all, I see, I think I see what Jen's saying is that next year, when that person appears. And then we're trying to explain to the public about why do we have this big cost.
I'll have more in there. I'll, I'll put more in there, it'll be, there'll be an explanation for it.
Okay.
Cuz when we hired it, we had the explanation, year one is, is full, full cost. Year two is full cost, year three, you get eighty five percent. And you're responsible for the X fifteen, at the end of year four, you have a determination of whether you can keep, you wanna keep that person or not, but it's fully on the board if you do at that time. Based upon our usage, it's probably gonna be our recommendation for that. Okay. I think that's why we do the staffing list, so we make sure that we're not missing someone. Um. So you see all the positions for Hall School. The, um. I think the biggest thing is what we get out of the paraprofessional three there, they're not certified folks, um, but. They do a lot. Um, probably. Um, we're lucky to have those positions. You can see the salaries again, and this one are up higher. What you have to remember when you compare year to year up the salaries is that's not just a contractual increase with a new contract. That is also based upon new hires, someone may have left that was making ninety thousand and the new person came in at sixty thousand. Or the person that left was making fifty five thousand and the new person we hired is making ninety. Okay, so that is based upon the census that we know today of how much we're gonna spend next year for staffing. All contractual. Purchase service is very similar to uh, Center School, the big cost here is Rosetta Stone's is in the ten grand, you've got um. This is one of the areas where we've spent grant uh, uh, grant funding from COVID funds. On something called gizmos for science to help our science experiments come to life. Where we wanted that to continue that, that's in this cost. It's been grant-funded in the past. Uh, and then the library media um, program. Got the climbing wall inspection in here, you have to have your copiers, your power school telephone, internet, all the same things. The one that should jump out at you here is the music uh, increase. Um, almost double. And um, the reason for that. Is uh, really out of band. Um, we are repairing more instruments now because we house more instruments, instead of kids renting. They are using Wellington in- Wellington instruments and they are being repaired if they break. And we're trying to keep on top of the repairs. They probably, MK, could double that amount, um. He's doing what he can with whatever money we put in front of him, and I felt like that was an increase to help out in the repair process. Right?
And those are used by students without charge.
Correct.
Right.
I see you have internet in there again, they have, you have internet going to both buildings, not like a fiber between the buildings to.
So.
Paying two different.
The fiber goes into one building. It goes in the hall, it's a run from hall, we've paid through charter to do this. To center. And, and then center to here, so you have drops in all three, and we actually have a, a connection for the town, for my office, through the fire department.
Also, the total bill is eight thousand something, twelve, yeah, you split it between the two, it takes you.
Correct.
Okay.
So basically, you have internet for the entire district for about a thousand dollars a month.
Yep.
Um, which without the E-rate would be times probably three.
Now, does the town use SAN also, or do they have?
We have to be on a totally different separate network. Um, so.
Is that a town charter, is that a?
No, that's a SAN thing, like you, the only way you can do it, so it's public schools, so on our side, we're on SAN. Everywhere else that's in wifi, I don't know what they have. I don't know, we're operating on it now, I think it's, I think it's charter.
I can tell us.
Minor change in supplies, again, similar, some increases there. Library books flat, same thing with computer equipment. Um, flat and the computer equipment is fully offset with three funds. Again, I entered, uh, uh, same number of things, items in building maintenance, again, I increased it ten thousand dollars for um, the repairs. And then when you get into sports and extra activities, the stipends are gonna increase with contracts, and you see that increase. We're spending less on officials just because we've been tracking it. Um, insurance is there, extra activity clubs are there, we're, we're having more clubs than we have in the past, and the stipends will go up. The increase in sports equipment uh, is the addition of cross-country. And needing to buy uniforms for that team, uh, and not having them wear old basketball jerseys that we did this year. So there's an increase, it'll be a one-time cost. Um. So you can see there's a, a slight increase in the program there, the other again is contractual stuff, travel, um. Principal MK gets a little more money um, out of hers, and really, this is, I think the middle school promotion tends to be a little. The total expenditures minus the grant offsets, again, whenever you see the, the grant offset R F S or in prior years, once, it's like next year, that line will disappear from your budget totally. Because it doesn't make sense to leave them in there. Um, so. You can see the increase, before I forgot the same number on this one.
This one's exact.
Okay, perfect. Um, uh, and again, the increase, we can really point towards salaries on this one, and the maintenance increase of ten thousand dollars. Questions on program two?
Me?
Yeah.
Have we shafted the fire extinguisher inspection company?
Yes, we actually, when we did our fire alarm um. Project that we did with Siemens, we actually shopped it, and because we were doing their um, that, they actually gave us a really good deal, and just kept adding things in.
Okay.
Um, it worked out. I don't know how they're making any money, I'll just say that, and so we will keep riding that as long as we can, compared to what we were paying, it, it is a good deal.
Okay, cool.
Program four? Fast one. We're gonna fly by his special ed, Marsha, I don't know.
Save it to next one.
Yeah, alright, so program four, you've got the uh, secretarial support. In here, and that's what the point three five is, um, there's, there's multiple people that are responsible for different things for their buildings. Uh, in here, that's what makes up the point three five, with, that's what makes up the twenty one thousand dollars. The bus contract is um. Obviously, we're, we're, I think we're through twenty seven, so we're in a. You know, that increase each year, we're up to five oh five, six hundred next year. The musical events is another thing I, talking to MK and uh, Rob Cannon and Ben and Spencer, Son of Bird, Bird, or um, Coral, so. Trying to balance out and treat music a little bit like we do sports. Um, we pay for the buses to, to competitions, and my feeling is, we should do a similar thing for musical events. The issue is, is they go on a lot of events. Um, and so they're trying to balance out um. Some of the costs, so there's certain costs, like the ones where they go to Six Flags, where I said, hmm, we'll, we'll pay a little bit. But you've gotta figure out the rest. Um, so we've increased that number intentionally, which is close to real, right? I mean, it's, that's what we're using for transportation costs. Um, sporting events are gonna go up next year, the clubs went up because it is. Buses are expensive, the number of clubs that we're running, and we can't do one bus, otherwise the kids would be on the bus for two hours. So that's there. Um. And kindergarten orientations minor, you got the total in there, diesel went down. Um, I convinced Donna, just looking at prior years of usage, uh, we used to do sixteen thousand gallons. Uh, and we've not crossed that in a couple of years, so I said, let's just go for fifteen thousand gallons. The issue is, is we pay a penalty in our contract if we don't use a certain amount. But it was still cheaper to pay the penalty than it was to go to the full sixteen. So. I left it at that, and next year, next time we negotiate it, we'll drop it down to fifteen uh, as it goes. So between the rate decrease and the small number of um, gallons of diesel, it's frowned. Um, we did have a new offset this year, we applied that, some of the title four funds for transportation to help. With the cost increase in the after-school clubs that run the middle school, um, and so you can see there's about a sixteen thousand dollar increase in this program.
I have a question, um, why are we paying for? Fuel for the buses?
Because you, they're part of what you pay for.
On top of the five hundred and something thousand, whatever it is.
You're paying for the bus, the repairs, the driver, the insurance, yes. Transportation, um, Marsha will give you a full speech on this next time if you'd like.
Repair rates.
So incredibly expensive. Uh, some of these are like. On the special ed side, five hundred dollars a day. For a student.
So I find it offensive that we have to pay for also gas for the buses, but I'm wondering why it's not rolled into their costs, like, why is it separated out?
So if they uh, for budgeting purposes, we track it, um, and we only. We negotiate the rates, I don't think they do that, I don't know of any bus company that does that. That's, that's fuel is separate.
That is absurd, maybe because it changes. It's not predictable.
And there, and, and they would just write it in their contract as going rates.
So it's.
No, Ashford owns their own buses, have we ever looked into it?
Yeah.
How much does the bus cost?
I'm looking. What'd you find?
Googling.
I haven't got that yet, I've got twenty twenty two, it's more pricey for us, right?
I think the Partridge family is selling there.
So. We have talked about, listen, in a good budget year, you'll hear this from me, and Marsha and I have had these conversations. I don't know that I'm really gonna advocate for buying uh, six, seven, seven buses, cuz you're talking about over a million dollars. That's just what, buy the buses, okay? Um, and then you have to get the insurance and all the training, and you have drivers you're now responsible for, which also means insurance. There's a lot of cost to it, and repair, it takes some time to build. They're now replacing, but I'm pointing that, sorry. They're now, you know, trying to replace the bus at a time, I think, and, and so you pay that fee. What I will advocate for is. Maybe some of the smaller things, when we send a cross-country team and we can put a fifteen-passenger van on the road and pay a driver. You don't need all those special licenses, they're still insured by the district, you just need the van and. That's probably cheaper than what we'd pay for a bus.
But we have thirty kids plus to go on cross-country.
Well, I'm just giving examples, small, right, there's times where, and.
To just pick the best kids.
Right, 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 now, sorry, I didn't use it anyway. But there's certain things that where you could do that, um, special education transportation is one of those as well.
Yeah.
Um, the problem is, is, it doesn't need a lift, and then, so you're talking about a minibus that needs a lift, and how much is that?
Diesel mechanics make like a hundred grand now.
Yeah, and if you drive by, um, the bus law on, by one ninety five and thirty two, what sign is always out front?
We're hiring.
Always looking for mechanics, always looking for drivers. It's shortage area, what do you do if you can't, you, you know? Yes, we've looked.
What are you talking, talking to E O last year? About some.
So we've talked about it, um, uh, about the potential of joining and, and trying to go out to bid. Um, there's schedule changes that would have to occur to do it, and part of this was like, do we need to think about? Like, I don't wanna enter into another five-year contract if you don't know what you're gonna be doing in five years with, with two schools. Cuz you don't. Um, but it's something that we could consider. Um, because. But don't get me wrong, don't think you're gonna cut your transportation bill in half. You know who fixes buses is Franz Motors, there you go, you can hire them, definitely. So you can see the total there for transportation, I mean, it's, it's.
Isn't really?
I always call it Frank's.
I call it Frank's, I gotta yell that.
That's what it is, that's how they pronounce it.
Like when you order a buffet.
I don't know that they're gonna be fixing any buses for us.
I have a question about the, the bus assignment, because I um, did a pickup today and there's. The smaller buses and then the super long ones, and those were definitely not. Full of children, so we don't wanna consolidate kids because then we'll be on the bus for three hours, as opposed to already, there's some of them. But who decides what size? Bus we need, and are any of them more like efficient than the others?
Guess what, you pay the same amount of money for that twenty-foot bus that you did for the forty-foot bus, whatever, same cost.
And the minibuses are used um, in our town, because of the roads.
The roads.
Third roads, that's where they go.
If they can't turn around.
Yeah, that, I understand, yeah.
It also could be that this was a day, today was a club day, so the buses may have been emptier because a lot of kids stayed.
Right.
But on a typical day, those buses are not empty.
They're full.
They're, they are full, they're much more full, and you have to have, you have to have a seat for everyone, they can't sit three to a seat, so. I know I've been on them to talk to kids and those seats are full.
Yeah.
On a, on a day that's not a Wednesday. Cuz there was basketball, there's basketball practice, there's clubs, you know, there's things that keep kids from going on the regular bus.
Just with our enrollment, that was like, why do we have these giant?
So I investigated.
For like the smaller ones, I heard what you said, it costs exactly the same, so that's.
I would like to do a, a waiver, but we're still gonna pay for it, meaning, you could say, I'm not gonna take transportation this year. And you could waive, but what we were told by the attorney was, that's nice, you can do that, but if that person decides to change their mind tomorrow. You have to provide the transportation. So that doesn't help us, the, the waiver thing, the, the statute that says you have to provide, provide transportation unless they're within a certain distance, is an issue.
Well, and like I said, you don't wanna add more students to the routes because they're already.
We try and keep it to an hour, but it's not, yeah, yeah. I actually look to try and cut a bus in this budget. Can't do it. You'd be out for around, uh.
As it is one of the buses, that's the bus in the beginning, their, their route is so long.
I know. Yeah, well, what were you saying about the, were you just thinking, just kinda spitballing about the van concept? Um. Do you have that belong to us?
Correct. Yeah, we've thought about that, we just haven't proposed it because of where we're at financially and what we're paying for, it's still expensive, but. There, there, I think there would be savings over. Ten years.
And the big picture.
Cuz Franz Motors could fix your thing.
Oh, could fix.
Right? Bus.
How many kids ride a bus?
Depends on the bus, like.
Depends on the bus.
No, but I mean, like, on average, how many kids are on their, on the buses?
Some buses could be twelve, a lot of kids get picked up.
No, a lot, but we've done the numbers, is it like twenty, twenty kids per bus?
Yeah.
Yeah. Elementary's higher.
We, I, I think we only have about, I would say nine, nine to ten families that pick up on a regular basis. And, and we have more that drop off, but that's because kids like that extra time in the morning. But on average, we have maybe eight kids getting picked up every day, the rest all ride the bus.
So, that.
Sorry. Um. Would that be alleviated if there was one time and one building? Or would it still cost the same?
You mean just this time?
Because there's one route, so.
Yeah, you might be, need one more bus, but then you're paying for two runs, not four.
I think it's under the.
Yes.
And that too, it must have.
And that, well.
It's on, it's on the list.
That's one way. Right, that'd be beneficial if they were all in one location. And had the same starting time in that big time. Okay.
Um, so that's programs one, two, and four. You'll have the op- opportunity next time at the beginning, the agenda will say, questions about one prior program? You'll have the op opportunity next time at the beginning, the agenda will say questions about what prior programs reviewed. One, two, or four, so you don't have to wait until next time if you wanna talk about it with, obviously with your your your, if the board, you can bring it up there. If you have something specific as you look through the budget for those programs, let me know. Unless it's something like real emergent, um. On the other programs, let me present them first first before you start firing questions, so when you look at special ed and you're like, ah, what's going on? Let me explain it first, let me do something first so you can see it, and then um we'll follow through, and there. It'll always come back, so the following one after next one, you you'll have the opportunity to ask questions too.
One quickie, why no longer um bus to orientation at EO?
Because it's in special ed, I think, if they were doing it. Yes, I think that's how they were doing it, it wasn't, yeah.
Because that was part of a.
It's it's part of the the program to have kids be introduced to the um school.
Yeah.
Our regular, ours, our gen ed students go to their. Orientation with their parents, it's not a school day type.
Oh, okay, they don't go, the regular population doesn't go to that, okay, they come to you, right?
No. No, no.
No.
The EO comes to us to talk about their programs, but in terms of the students learning more about the school, that's done.
Yeah.
On a different, at a different time.
We're talking about.
This is mainly to allow students who have special education needs. They become more comfortable with their case managers and the building, that that's what that day is for.
Yeah. Yeah, very good, and then they have the orientation in the fall.
Yes, yes.
To start, yeah.
Any other questions?
Amanda?
I don't think so.
Just write it down?
Yeah.
I'll be shuffle for buses.
Yeah.
They're not.
Getting a C D L.
Do you need a C D L or do you need just a miss?
Sorry.
You need a C D L for a bus.
For the vans.
One time at a time.
You need a van.
I drove, I drove a club wagon.
You need a van license for the van.
Yeah. It's gonna get coached up my status.
And there's different, there's different ones for different, with the vans, there's different things, there's different endorsements, cause EO looking into getting vans for transmission.
Yep.
And there's like three different endorsements depending on what the van does.
Yeah, face off the lead, yeah, yeah.
Do you guys use that, those, the minibus that's on the side there? There's a minibus on the side of the.
I have no idea, if we do it, never, I'm sure of it, and I always get asked.
I have a license.
Oh, maybe it's ag port, okay.
I mean, they fix it.
No, I I asked about that one very bad, they don't like that program.
That's the uh.
It's just they don't have the space for me, they would need a lift, and they they had a lift for like ag equipment, but they don't have a heavy, they don't have two tons of which for for. Vans.
Okay.
Great.
That's all I got.
Alright, so we have gone over program one, two, and four. And Wednesday, January twenty second, we'll be meeting at five thirty again to discuss program three, which is special education and related services. Program five is health services, program six, curriculum and staff development, wow, we have that tonight. Program seven, utilities, and program ten, fringe benefits and substitutes, kicking it off, of course, with a review of what we discussed tonight. So we just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, so they're um have their mind set and their calendars scheduled so they can join us again. Okay, we are ready to, generally just need to do that officially. Move to the next.
Second.
Thank you.
Jen, John.
Good job, I'll thank you, and you're you're joining at six forty five.
Yeah.